Lawyerless caller.
Steven, you've called directly to the council chamber, so we've got you.
We've got you.
I hear motion goes off the agenda.
I so will.
Your second?
My second.
Motion made in second from the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Move down to three, discussion on town manager recruitment. I guess that falls back on you, Steven.
And myself.
And Jeff.
Welcome to the evolution of city. As you know, things always change and we have movement. You're in a position now where you need to try to recruit city manager. I don't do recruitments, but I advise in the background whether it is following veterans preference, writing up job descriptions, or also employment agreements for hiring a high-level banking official. That being said, there are not a lot of options out there, but there are different recruiting agencies. And then there's also League of Oregon Cities. League of Oregon Cities went through a rough patch several years ago with some difficulties in hiring and not really vetting very well. I don't know how long it's done since then, but they may have some ideas. But also, I had a recent local client, government client, a district, use Prossman, and I have some contact information there, and they said the process went very well. Veterans preference was followed. They did a lot of background information. They got three very good candidates, and one is being offered a job as we speak. So, that's another alternative. Obviously, everything has a dollar value behind it, so you'll have to decide. I would encourage you that regardless, you do a very, very good background investigation, the decisions you make now will and could affect your city for the next 20 years. So, it's not something you rush into. If there is a concern about needing an interim, then you either engage Reberta to come back as an interim, or you find a different city interim. There are different ones available, you have LOC or ALC or others. There's people that kind of deal every time, they do a first or a period, it's fine.
Couple of pieces to add to that. I just got back from the municipal cities attorney's, CLD. There are nine open city manager positions around the state of Oregon right now. Burns being one of them. Cities of all kinds of different sizes and shapes and salary levels. So, it's a city managers market, as you were. There's a lot of openings right now. I'm gonna suggest probably going with somebody that's gonna maybe cast a wide net, whether it's League of Oregon Cities or the recruiter that Steven has mentioned, just that you get the best slate of candidates, whether it's in-state or out-of-state. Because again, it's such an important position that I'm also gonna make sure you guys need to give yourselves time to get the right candidate. Because if you get somebody here, get them kind of speed, and it's not a good fit, one, you're like, you have to pull the trigger on letting somebody go with one of those, you know, three or six-month provisions in their contract because you're not happy with their performance, and you're right back to the other. And also, you're just, you're gonna want who's the best fit for the job, so it's actually gonna stay here and actually give you the service that you're wanting. So, it's really important that you give yourself the time. So, I'm definitely on work with, you need an interim under some capacity, whether it's Reberta or not saying anything. And I'm really gonna highly suggest that you do the materials you have here, kind of detail three separate processes. League of Oregon Cities, outside recruitment, or trying to do it yourselves. I don't see doing it yourself as gonna get enough of a pool to be able to do this. I think you're gonna need to bring somebody in. And again, I've heard some of the same criticisms of League of Oregon Cities. I don't think they're bad, but they, I don't know that they get as wide of a pool as you're necessarily gonna want. You may wanna go with something out of state, just because that may be the best candidate for the job. So, that's our kinda, because I know a couple of the folks are kind of in the same boat looking for this. And again, it's a special person for a special community that would come in here and that you're gonna afford, and that you're also gonna be what you're looking for for your vision of the city. So, that's my suggestion, is just be deliberate and be conscientious and don't, like I said, and give yourself adequate time so you can, you know, look through multiple rounds. Plus, there's also some traps of like the veterans preference and stuff like that. Veterans have the interviews unless they don't meet minimum requirements. There's also, if an advocate's being involved, can mess things up and get a suit for not properly giving other preferences and things of that nature, so.
Jeff, another point is, you really wanna examine someone's motives to wanna come to Lakeview. Right? It's no touch to your city, but it's not at the top of the charts. And you've gotta really think deep down, why is someone wanting to move here? Why are they really to outroot their lives and establish themselves as a leading figure in the community in Lakeview? And I think that would be very telling as to their sincerity of wanting to be your new city manager.
Yeah, you don't want somebody that is one step ahead of a lawsuit before their past job was, or something along those lines. And that's one of the advantages of hiring a recruiting firm, is a lot of that background vetting is taken care of. We do that with one when we were doing police department hires and stuff like that. And it's gonna be probably even more of a background check or something like this just because of the importance of the position. So, that's kind of the, and the point of this meeting today is to kind of have you guys give us what kind of direction you wanna go, or if you want more information with one of those different options, how you wanna do that.
So, if I may, having heard what's been said so far, the big question would be, is Reberta, to you, are you interested in doing interim at all?
Oh, I could.
Okay, so, on a short-term basis, I think. So, that being said, then we'd wanna work out the particulars if that, I mean, knowing our timeframe, it doesn't seem like we'll be ready by end of June.
We won't be able to wear clothes by end of June to having someone hired.
It may be something that we really wanna strongly consider. I mean, that's, to me, that's, you know, one of the first options that we ought to possibly go with. I, like what's been said, I mean, I think we need to, yeah, look at people's motives, but we need to have a good, large pool of people. And if there's that many positions available right now, that tells me that there's probably a reason behind that. And it could be that they're all getting older and wanting to retire, or whatever's going on right now, so we're gonna end up possibly finding someone that may be, you know, a bit younger, that, yeah, hopefully has right motives and wants to stay here for a while.
Well, we don't, be very careful, we don't hire based on age.
Oh, I know that, yeah, I'm not saying that at all. I definitely don't.
Well, and the other thing is too, that I guess we need to figure out, I guess on the salary would be depending on experience.
I think we had ordered it before, a starting salary, you know, between such and such depending on experience.
And again, I think what you really, that's again, why I think you probably wanna look for a recruiting agency to kind of get that range, because recruiting agency's gonna have the market range of, hey, this is the salary range, you need to look at. Because you're not allowed to ask anymore, that's a violation of pay equity stuff that goes on. So, it's gotten a lot harder, I mean, some of the basic stuff that you used to be able to do to kind of get things figured out of, okay, what's this person's experience? You know, that salary used to tell you a lot of that, that's no longer permissible under state law. So, there's other ways of having to kind of make some of those determinations. And again, hiring a professional to do that for you is kind of where it needs to go. And also, to get a big enough applicant pool that you guys actually have choices instead of just the first person that files up.
So, are there any other options that we're not really, haven't discussed yet or looked at? Obviously, if we didn't, I mean, we've gotta have somebody at the helm, I mean, run the ship. The council can't fully make all of day-to-day decisions.
No, and you shouldn't be, you shouldn't be doing day-to-day. So, really, it's a higher back of the interim, and so you fill the gap.
Right, and that's one aspect. And then the other is who are, you've got a couple of options. Okay, you can say, okay, we wanna hire League of Oregon Cities. So, town manager, go do that, let's get that pool together. We'll have them come in, develop the total job description that we're really fully invested in, et cetera. Or, town manager, I want you to hire this recruiting agency. And get that, you go to where you do that, or hire a recruiting agency in consultation with Steven and I. We'll get you, and they're gonna, and then work, and then once that person's in effect, you guys approve that hire of the interview contract with, and develop what you're looking for, get everything out there, and then get that pool of candidates out there. Or three, try to do it yourself. So, that's the one I think would be the most difficult, just because of, again, you don't, you're not in the business of hiring, firing town managers, you know, across the state or across the nation.
Is that what we did though, last time? I thought that's what we did.
We did it ourselves.
We kind of did it in-house.
We did it in-house.
I think it was like 16 applicants, at least half of which were not qualified.
I think it was advertised to League of Oregon Cities.
Right, you know, always advertise to League of Oregon Cities. What I'm telling you is, I, because there are so many openings right now, I think you're gonna wanna be a little more active about what you're doing. Because it's just, there's a lot of open stuff going on right now, and I think you guys want the best candidates that are actually going to stick around.
So, I guess the next question is, if we hire a private company is what I assume you're talking about, if we're not gonna use League of Oregon Cities or ourselves, how much does that cost?
Correct, and that's why that would be.
An important factor, kind of, in this.
Exactly.
It costs you 20, I bet you it costs you 20, 15 or 20.
15.
I just, I don't know, but I, you know.
Well, even 10's a lot.
Yeah, but let's, let me throw something out there. If somebody doesn't work out, and most of the time, the contracts have that, you know, six months of salary, or three or four months of salary, a bad fit ends up costing you in salary the same amount as not.
If not more.
If not more. So, that's the, there's sometimes, you do what you have to, and sometimes you do what you want to, but there's being penny wise and count foolish, and that's where this could go. And again.
Yeah, and I would anticipate you're gonna do an employment agreement with a city manager. So, you'd have a severance clause, you'd have a probationary clause. You'd likely have an arbitration agreement, in lieu of a court agreement. You might also have relocation costs included. So, there are, there are a lot of aspects on the backend that would have to be dealt with as well.
And again, with some of that type of stuff, with some of those fringe benefits, folks, that also can implicate pay equity as well. So, it's another one that you've gotta be really careful what you offer to make sure that you're in compliance, so we don't end up buying ourselves a lawsuit anyway. It's just, it's another, was kind of the horror story of this last legal conference, was how complicated recruitment has become after Oregon's pay equity act. They really got really strict about certain things that you used to kind of just take for granted, and so it makes it a lot more difficult. So, I'm gonna recommend you have both Steven and I involved in the process with whoever we hire to do the recruitment, to make sure we work up contracts that you're both, that everybody is comfortable with, you know, once you select the candidate, you got something there.
Does the league charge?
Yes.
Do they charge, do we know what that is?
I don't.
It's probably significantly less.
It is less, it is less. But again, it's been kind of a, I did not get a lot of warm and fuzzy feelings where other people have talked and done it, but then there's some people that have liked it. So, it's kind of a, it's an option. And at least they'll do the, and I think they do a decent job on the background vetting process.
Because LGPI still do recruitment.
I don't think LGPI does actual recruitment.
No.
But it might be a little bit better. What's that?
I was not sure, so.
No, I don't, I don't think they do. There's only two people, I used to be at LGPI, there's only two people now.
Okay.
When I was there, we didn't not do recruitment.
And do the recruiter also do all of the background checks then?
Yeah, generally.
You're buying a package. And that's again, this is a similar process like the school district does for superintendent. I mean, unless you've got internal candidate promoting. I mean, this is not an uncommon for high-level executive functions like this, whether it's a county manager, or a city supervisor, or city manager, or superintendent. I mean, this is, buying is the best bet.
I think our next step is we need to find out what the cost is gonna be, and what they're offering for what we're paying for.
Right.
Steven, you mentioned that you have, you knew an investigator or something like that?
A com, is it a person or a company? It's a, I think it's.
Yeah, there's a company called Prossman.
Right.
And I have a government client that recently used them, and they were very pleased with the results.
There's Peckman and Hoffman, or there's, there's, I think, three that I'm aware of, three applicants. So, we could actually find out what each one charges.
And get the league, and get the possibility to, too. And then make the choice between all four of them as far as, you know, that way kind of competitive bidding, you know, get them to say how it's.
Yeah, make them earn your business, right?
Yeah. Or, the other thing, is you can tail off of these nine cities, or, you know, I think that because Burns is open, and if Lakeview, they're in the LOC bullet, and at the same time, you might get the same type of person applying, or the person that wants to move to the rural area. But that may be, I don't know, that's just, you know, whatever you guys wanna do, is what I need to do to help to get them, so.
I know there is people out there that wanna get out of the city, but I don't know if they're, you know.
You may wanna get this far out of the city.
Right.
Yeah, they're only 100 miles.
That's the question.
Well, and it's not that much less complicated coming to a small town and being a town manager either, so they have to have.
Still the same set of problems.
Yeah.
And let's be honest, folks, you're not gonna attract somebody that was like, unless they're really looking to retire, you're not gonna attract somebody that's qualified to manage Medford or Portland here most of the time. You can't afford to pay enough. And again, somebody at that level of executive, there's, I mean, they've got a whole HR department. It's, again, it's like the difference between being the mayor of Lakeview and being the governor. I mean, it's just, it's kinds of scale.
Not in that same sin.
I don't want that headache.
We don't have different departments within the town manager thing, like human resources, or, they have to do it all. Yeah, the town manager is, is the person that manages a wide, wide range of things. And so, that really is difficult to find.
Yeah, it's like, you know, another example would be it's like the general ranch manager versus somebody that's managing Safeway at the corporate level, you know, at the head of the state. So, I mean, it's a, those would be kinds of scale. So, I guess ultimately, I think Steven and I would like, you guys want us to get you the op, you guys, I think, does council want to decide, hey, would you get a, it's a package together of different people that can do the recruiting and give us the details? Is that kind of what you wanna do, and then have us do it that way, or?
That's what I'd like to see.
I'd like to see that, you know, and then what the, the cost will be, and how they.
It'll be a whole bid package.
A little bit of how they work, and so on, and, you know, but yes, I think we should probably proceed down that line.
But are we talking another week or two out, or, I mean, is that something that's gonna take a half-hour phone call?
No, probably a week.
Yeah, a week.
By the time they respond.
Would we know anything by next council meeting?
I would think we could have a general. We might not have everything put together, but I would think that if we called, we should be able to get that.
Yeah, because again, it's a, it's just a request for a quote.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be quick, I mean, it seems like they give you a ballpark quote on the phone.
Well, I would call maybe recommendations from someone, because, you know.
Well, why don't you call some of the cities that are actively engaged and find out who the recruiter is?
That's a good idea.
And get, and get as many, and then obviously.
If we didn't Burns, when I was on the council there, we did it all in-house. I would imagine they're doing it in-house, but.
Yeah, I think they're doing it.
We always get lots of applicants regardless, I think, for recruiter or not.
But I do think you get a smaller.
Soon and better.
So, if that's what you want us to do, then.
Well, I think we need to know the numbers, yeah. I mean, because if it's 20,000, it's like, yeah, it's probably in-house, yeah, I mean, that's a lot of money.
But guys, maybe not. If you get the right, if you find the best of the candidates and you get everything taken care of, I wouldn't necessarily say no based on just the exact cost. I mean, it's obviously, it's gotta be within your budget, everything else. But getting a quality product, it's like, yeah, it's like the difference between hiring, you know, a master landscaper and hiring Jim Bob that just came by with his lawnmower to deal with your, you know, taking care of your park. I mean, it's, you get what you pay for a lot of times.
You do, but the other part of that is, you know, I'd just like to find out where they worked, or who they may have worked for, and what their experience was, with them.
And that's why, I mean, it would be nice to reach out to the league and just, there's gotta be a pretty good study that says who's coming to the small communities, and, you know, where is their experience, and what, I mean, if I was in that market, it seemed like, you know, you wouldn't. You know, recruiting somebody to Lakeview, yeah, it's gonna be, you know, it's gonna be interesting to see what we get, but. Their motives are all, it's fine, I mean.
And you have to just do the best you can as far as background checking, kind of get some of that stuff pre-screened out.
Yeah.
But you also don't want to be waiting through 50 applications that just aren't qualified.
We did it in-house last time, there was about 16, and we only kept it open for about a month, but.
We, it was a little longer than that, I think, yeah. But we did, we did get a num, not a number, but some people from out of state. I think we did a telephone interview with one person, and, and, I think there was a couple others from out of state, but, you know, we did it, but.
Yeah, it'd be nice to know what the other communities are doing real quick, I mean.
So, but I guess what I'm asking the council, do you want them to go ahead and give us the?
Yeah, and I would even say, I would say, can you even check what the league is gonna, what cost?
Well, yeah, that would be part of the league.
Just do it all, just real quick, and then, last note by Tuesday, and then we'll, we'll make a decision Tuesday.
Okay.
And in that, yeah, research, just check what other eastern Oregon counties are doing real quick. They're mostly west-side, big city Portland, the valley stuff, I wouldn't worry about it.
I would look at, I should go on the league of Oregon City and look at the jobs to see where that are.
So, does that kind of consensus still?
Yes.
Yes, I think so. You with that, Stan?
And in that, can, how, this other topic of interim, can we get kind of specifics on what we're talking about, like?
What the League of Oregon Cities has to offer.
Yeah, what, like, if there's other options?
The League of Oregon Cities has a list of potential interims, that's all two of them. They have two of them. That's what they do. That's all, that's as far as they go as far as interim stuff. So, that's.
Can we get the information on those two?
Absolutely. You know, so provide the, yeah, we can provide the, as part of what we're doing for next week, we can get the resumes for both of them.
It's just two people?
That's all that's on there.
It's all that's on there.
It's all that's available at this time.
Yep.
Well, if you've got nine positions open, and I'm sure that.
Yeah.
I think one, and I don't know if he's still there or not, but I know one of them was working at Oak Ridge. I don't know if he's still.
They're specifically just interim, they just like to go and help out.
They're retired, they're by five-hundred, so.
You'll be coming in or not, I can't.
Right, you know, yeah. They'll, you know, when a city needs help during this same process. And at least you have the experience to kind of keep everything going, you know.
So, it'd be nice to, yeah, know like ballpark those two, but then also what you, you know, range, salary, whatever, whatever they're, this type of, just to know those details by Tuesday.
Hopefully, we'll be able to get a little better idea of how long this is all gonna take, like three months, four months, five months. I, and it depends, you know, you got, like you said, it's gonna be a little more difficult because of people running than like the rest of others, but there may be somebody in Lakeview that wants to go, too, that has some experience.
So, Steven, if you could reach out and kind of find the information on that, when you.
What information is that?
Why?
No, on the company.
Oh, I already know which company it is.
Oh, you got it, so, okay, so we'll, we can take care of that part of them. So, I'm gonna have Reberta.
Yeah, let Reberta do that, it'll be more effective.
Yeah, so we'll have, we'll have Reberta then get all of, get a price for a price quote from the various ones we were, and the league, and that should get you the basics. Along with the other two interim options.
Yeah.
Council, is everybody good with that?
I'm fine.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Good. Good discussion, guys. I'm gonna part ways, I think we've covered opening cover.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, thanks for your call.
Thank you, guys. You're welcome.
Okay.
So, this contract was obviously after your interim, or your probation time.
Right.
Is this something that you wanna review and then have this, or another similar draft for the next person, or?
I think we're gonna, there's some things that have changed in the last couple of years, so Steven and I, I think we're gonna need to go through what we have and just start doing some. But I think you need to find somebody first, and we can work out some, I mean, we want to have the details of salary range.
Write a contract to that person.
Exactly.
Write this as a general contract.
Exactly.
Are you talking about the interim person, or the final person?
Both.
Yeah, both, you'd have to do all of them.
Both.
Yeah, I mean.
But I would say it'd be nice to start brainstorming that information.
Correct, correct, and it's something definitely to be working on with. It's something to be working on with, with Steven and I, with what we're currently doing. But what I'm saying is, the most important part, a lot of times, once you've got someone going to come here, the contract falls into place. I mean, kind of, you guys will have generals if you want, it's negotiation back and forth, and then you get something in place. But again, it's gonna be somewhat tailored, because there's been a few changes, especially the pay equity stuff this last year, that's really, that's really the dangerous territory. Plus, at least it's a veterans preference stuff, but that's more on the front of the job, so. It's definitely stuff to be looking at.
Maybe they'll come with the contract that happened in previous, I'm gonna call, look at that.
Can't do that, because you're asking about salary.
Yeah, I'm not talking about the salary part, I'm just, I'm talking about the general specifics of the contract, other than the salary.
Yeah, I don't know, somebody would turn that over, I mean, I guess you could go get it from their prior entities, if you have that in public record, but it's a.
Well, yeah.
It's gotta be a little bit.
They even accept what we offer, or they don't.
I have a question, though. Now, I'm not even gonna ask it, I'll be happy to answer it.
Okay, anybody have anything else?
Are you guys wanting one of, any of those folks here, or just a written perspective, like a written bid? I don't know that we're gonna get somebody here.
No, no, we don't think.
Oh, you mean by next week? No, not by next week.
I think you just wanna, if they can get you a written price quote, that would be about the best you're gonna get for now. Then you, if you like some of them, or thinking about you wanna go that route, then we can maybe get somebody in here to really get more details about. You know, so he says, this is gonna be $200,000, well, obviously.
Yeah, there's no sense in them.
Exactly.
Well, and what did Kirk say? What did he, what recommendation did Kirk have?
Kirk said to not post a job, which was already done, and wait until him and his team and LOC talk and put together a job description, and go from there, but it's already been posted. So, we kind of got to Kirk in front of order.
Well, no, because there was two of you saying one thing, and two of you saying the other thing. You know, they're not meeting.
What meeting was that?
The executive session on what to do, to get it posted or not to get it posted. Because these two said that, this is what I heard, these two said that they went through the process before, they had everything they needed, there rarely wasn't a need to go through CIS. And you and Miki said, let's go through CIS department, contacted them. So, it was a split. In the meantime, I'm left in limbo. In the meantime, I'm getting, we need to publish it and at least get it post proof.
But we have a job description.
I know, I know, that's why I don't understand.
Charter that specifically also says what your job descriptions are.
I know, that's why I don't understand this.
The more, the more advertising of this, to me, the better, just to keep letting people know we need someone soon. I mean, whether we use a recruiter, whether it's just out there and people find out about it. Regardless, we're gonna start getting applicants, and to me, the more, the better. I mean, we're not gonna get 100 applicants, we're gonna get enough that we can, if it's 40, I don't really care.
That recruiter has no idea about.
And you can still run that person through the vetting process through the recruitment. Regardless, I, I think you're gonna need LOC, or you're going to need the recruiter. One of the two at a minimum for your background check part of it.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, the background check is the real hard part, I think, to do, yeah. And someone that's experienced and trained in it.
And really digs deeply, because like I said, there could be some stuff that pops up that can be pretty well. In the era of passing the trash, which is, you go away and we won't say anything, it takes, you definitely want to scratch more than the surface.
Well, and I know that CIS has the job descriptions, you know, and that's what they specialize in, is the job description. So, if you wanted to change it, they do that. Now, Steven is a labor attorney, yes, but he works for the unions, and that's why he's doing the other work that we've hired him for. But everything we do with him, like this conversation today, isn't about a labor attorney. And that's where CIS, I think, I think that we're spending way too much money on Steven to, that's just my opinion, you guys do what you want, but.
I agree.
I know what we're paying him, and I know that conversation was just 200 bucks, and I.
At least.
Yeah, and why? Why are we bringing Steven into everything when we should be bringing? That's my question to you, because you, you know, wanted him involved with this, and I. to you, because you, you know, wanted him involved with this, and I.
The reason why is because we had some, I was getting some very negative things about LOC from multiple different sources, so I.
From the council?
No, from outside entities. There was some real nervousness about their recruitment, to be perfectly honest, there was some real concerns, and it might, and it might be a lot of just people being gun-shy. What had happened was banks used them to recruit somebody, and it was an unmitigated disaster, I mean, it made you a renonian, it's not what you want yourself, now hopefully things have gotten better since then, but.
How long ago was that?
Two thousand twelve.
So, that's been six years.
Seven years.
Exactly, yeah.
But I, I'm still hearing a lot of people, like I said, a lot of other city attorneys, a lot of other, because I bounce this around, just generally, Ken, what are you guys doing? And it's, it's a hard watch, it's, it's a messy.
Well, I, I think you're going to get that with any kind of recruitment.
True.
You're going to have people who absolutely love them, or you're going to have people absolutely hate them.
People absolutely hate them.
And people that are kind of in the middle of it.
Exactly, that's why I think, get your options out there, the main thing I want to have done probably, is just make sure, give him a quick review of whatever contract we call it, just to make sure there's no other issues that I'm not seeing, that's as far as I would go, I don't, he doesn't need to be involved in the interview, I think you guys get a decent recruitment company, I more wanted if he had a recommendation for pick the recruiter, let me check out, again, it's affordable, and he did give us a name, so that's valuable, but that's my, like I said, we don't do this a ton, and the other thing is, like I said, nine open positions makes me nervous, because that's a lot of, a lot of people with not the whitest, and again, the retirement issue is an issue, there's a lot of your city managers are in that baby boomer generation that are leaving the, a lot of the better ones are leaving the, so if you're looking for that, somewhere in the midpoint of their career, somebody, or maybe somebody that's moving up from a finance director or something like that, it's got to be the right person, because it can be an unmitigated disaster, and then you just, and then if he doesn't, isn't the right person, congratulations, you just paid off, you know, three, six, a month's of salary.
This seems like there's a lot in, you know, upper government positions that are turning over.
Right.
Planning directors, there's at least one or two of thirty-six counties, there's one or two available every month.
And a lot of those are pulling from the same pool of applicants.
So, you're getting, yeah, exactly, I mean.
Because, you know, like I said, if you.
And there's how many cities in the state?
Right, I mean, let's, let's put it this way, what if you were, you know, let's say you were city manager of like Heinz or something, and a planning director position comes open for climate falls, that's probably a pay raise or whatever, so you, there's a lot of lateral movement, depending on what goes here or there, so that's kind of the issue.
Okay, we have the final decision on whoever they recommend, but do we get to see the other applicants that they're, the, the applications that they are considering?
Yes.
We would be specific with them and say, we want the top, you know.
Yeah, because I, I, you know, I think we need to look at them also, and not just depend on them to say, this is the person.
When I recently did four, we went through, they recommended the top five.
Yeah, they usually rank them.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, and I'd say, this is who we recommend for your city.
Okay.
So, then they would have that interview process.
We've done that with a bunch of managers, you know, you.
And the nice.
As many as you want.
So, would you do the final interviews instead?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes. This is just, it's a win-win, this is a, this is a, is that?
Clearing house, kind of.
Exactly, it's a win-win process to get it done to people you're actually interested in.
So, you're not wasting your time with the guy that just got out of high school that thinks he's a manager?
Yeah, or in this case, just got out of his master's program for public administration.
Or out of prison.
Right.
What, the guy got out of prison?
Out of college, I think.
But you knew everything?
Well, there's, I just, I did look through this book quite a bit, anyway, there's a lot of good stuff in here with questions and stuff, that when it comes, we can really use it.
And the other thing, and whether you're using the league or anything else, what I like about some of the processes that they bring in, they can bring in some pre-genere forms, because there's some stuff with how you do scoring and stuff, you've got to come up with a numerical base, Veterans' Preference requires, if a veteran applies, the only defense you can take to the employment department is a points-based system, you have to do it by points.
That's in here too.
Exactly, and that's.
So, we did the sheriffs, we can hire the deputies, we're all based on points.
They say there's another system, but they've never signed off on what the other system looks like, and everyone that's tried it has had, been in front of both of you.
There's forms that, a lot of the stuff that's in here that we would use, could use.
And that could be why you might want to consider using LOC.
Well.
And it, it may just the background checks part of it.
So, so the only other question, and Scott kind of alluded to this with the job description part of it, now, and I, I kind of brought up that we're, we're pretty specific in our charter of our, what a role as council people are, and what the manager's role is, and it really spelled it out very clearly in our charter, hiring, firing duties, yada, yada, and all this stuff, that, that may be something that, that we want clarity on, when we do hire somebody else, how specific can we get into what we actually want, going possibly away from the charter without changing the charter? Because, you know, you know, vetting, process more of new hires, or even inner, inner-house promotion and stuff like that, I, I think is a, is kind of a major concern of the council that, that is ongoing, that, you know, it is spelled out clearly in the charter, and not taking anything from what Roberta's done, but it's like, it would be nice to have more of a say in what happens.
Then you need to put it back to the voters.
And that's, that's the key I wanted to hear you say, because that's what I think we need to understand, is that without going to the voters, we really have our hands tied, we can't do anything.
That's like, that, the charter thing about it is your constitution.
But with, with an employee contract, can we not kind of?
Nope.
Clear off of that at all, even if they agreed to it?
No, it doesn't matter if they agree to it, you're, you're ultra-virus, you're outside, you're outside.
It's like the law, I mean, basically.
We have a big problem there.
Yeah, and so that's why, why is it in the charter, like, just because that's the way it's gone, voted in, but can we change it and then eliminate it out of the charter, and then it'll be under a contract basis, because someday we may say, oh man, we, we have all trust in this new city manager, and this is ten, twenty years from now, and we say, look, they've got the control, and we're fine, or we might say, no, you're young, you're a young guy, you don't have very much experience, we want to make sure you're doing it right.
This is just a general observation, the reason the charter is set up the way it is, is to insulate you folks from personal liability for day-to-day management decisions, you have what's called legislative immunity, as long as you're doing stuff within, in more of a legislative function, but when you get directly involved in direct management stuff, it turns into, then you have the same liability for harmful hiring, all of that type of stuff, then falls back on individual council members, that's why the charter is set up the way that it's set up, and that's why the league Oregon cities had it set up that way, is to, so that the deliberative body, the town council, the legislative body, has that legislative immunity for what they're doing, that's why it's there, because if you start getting involved in day-to-day operations, then you start getting the liability that a manager does for day-to-day operations, and yeah, there's, obviously the city identifies you and everything else like that, but that's, then you're getting personally named in lawsuits, I mean, it's a.
And I'm not, and I'm not trying to say, oh, the town council hired this person, I'm talking about, it's an executive session, and we're considering hiring, and it's under that sketch, it's a decision to talk about, and then we've at least said.
Again, if you make the decision and something happens, and it, the person turns out to be an ax murderer.
But it's not our decision, is what I'm saying, I'm just saying, hey, we got briefed